Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the August 9th, 2016 meeting of the Manchester Town Council. Boy, we have a packed house tonight. Steve, were they giving away something at the door? Because I should go back. Unfortunately, Mayor Warner and Councilman Warner were not able to make the meeting this evening, but we do have a quorum, so we are able to conduct business. And our first order of business is to pledge allegiance.
(inaudible). I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next is approval of the July 12th, 2016 minutes. I guess everybody got a copy?
Mm-hmm.
Have I seen any changes?
I make a motion that we approve the July 12th, 2016 minutes.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next is receipt of the June 2016 Treasury report and July 2016 check register. We always tend to do those separately, don't we, Steve?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we receive the June 16th, 2016 Treasurers' report.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And then July 16th, 2016 check register.
I'll make the motion that we accept the 2016 July 2016 check register.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Mayor's report. Happy to report that our third annual national night out was again a huge success and a great big thank you to all the volunteers and organizations. It's hard to pull off a function like that without so many wonderful caring giving people. And again, it was another great success. Just wanted to read a few thank yous. The Manchester Volunteer Fire Department Ladies Auxiliary for donating the girls' bike. Bollinger and Brooks Construction for the boys' bike and a $30 gift card to Island Green. Jen Warner and Stacy Graff for both of the bicycle helmets and a manicure set. Eckhart Funeral Chapel for a $25 gift card to GameStop, Raven shirt, and their football. Manchester Volunteer Fire Department for the hot dogs and soda. Miller's Market for the chips, pretzels, and water. Dutch Corner for the ice cream. Carroll Drugs for toys and trinkets. And Ronnie Whalen for providing the sound system. Again, a big thank you to everybody. And a big thank you to all the wonderful volunteers from the town administrative office, public works, town council, fire department, police force. Again, I wish I could just list everybody's names with a big thank you to all the volunteers because it really means a lot. I'll make another big thank you to Trinity Church for holding a thank you service on Sunday, September 11th for all police, fire, town employees, and mayor and council. Again, a very nice gesture. Congratulations goes out to two local young men for earning their Eagle Scout this month, Sam Geddy and Jacob Ikurst. Just a reminder to everybody, school starts Monday, August 29th, so please be aware of the children, school bus stops and added traffic. And the Manchester Valley High School Stampede will be held on Wednesday, August 31st at 6:30 PM. That's all I have. Anything else specific that you can add? Anything else I forgot? Okay? Good. All right, town administration reports. Steve?
Okay, good evening, council members and members of the community. We'll go ahead and start with the July 2016 administrative report. Under pending items, the S.H.A. projects, Route 27 and widening project. I requested a meeting to discuss the cost of water main relocation with S.H.A. I've gotten no response back from them after two attempts, so I will keep trying to get in touch with them. There's been no change on the Sheech project. Our new town hall and police station, the building is about 92 to 95 percent complete. I will give you a status report here on some of the loose ends that we're in the process of closing up. We did receive a temporary UNO for two areas of the new building for furniture storage. Our crews, as you recall, we had some file cabinets and some other items in this room which were taken up yesterday and stored. We have the Verizon issues that are being worked out with the telephone system. We have furniture quotes out. We're expecting those back any day. We have internal phone system quotes coming back to us. The draperies have been ordered. We still, of course, need training on all of our electrical, security, fire alarm system in the building. The audio/video hookup in the council room and the training room, that's still up in the air right now, so we're still waiting on a response back from CMC on that. We did have an issue with the doors, the wooden doors for each offices. The general contractor told me today that they should arrive Thursday, so they should be mounted on Friday, and then hooking up our computer system. So, things are starting to come together. There's a lot of loose ends we have to take care of, though. I will pass this on to Mayor Warner, but I want the council to be aware. I would like for the mayor to form a committee to create an open house and an open dedication ceremony sometime, once we get closer and we can nail down our opening date. So, I will pass that on to him, so a committee can be formed and move ahead on that. One of the pending items, the sidewalk issues. Letters were sent out to the residents within the Westminster Street area on July 21st. Under code enforcement, rental housing, and new construction, you have the monthly status report for code violations and Manchester Farm Section 7. Under new construction, the construction continues. Under miscellaneous items, we do have an action item here, the award of the ADA Sidewalk Project, which will be coming up later in the agenda. Councilman Wilder, you talked about National Night Out. You also mentioned the September 11th Trinity United Church of Christ, our invitation to go over there. Really appreciate that. Commissioner Wance has set up a proactive readiness meeting on August the 23rd with all agencies involved with the opening day of Manchester Valley High School. Also, there is a meeting that Chief Hess and I just found out about this afternoon, Thursday at 10:00 AM, in regards to meeting with the Board of Education personnel at Manchester Valley to discuss opening day for Manchester Valley. So, we will be involved in both of those meetings. Commissioner Wance is also scheduling a town hall meeting for September 7th, 8th, or 15th. I'll let you know more once that date's been nailed down and go from there. Right now, I believe the location will be the Manchester Activities Building.
Isn't the 15th is our, is an MML, right? So?
It could be Councilperson Smith.
That's what it says, MML on Thursday, September 15th.
Yes, you are correct. I will let, I will let his staff know about that.
Okay.
Okay, moving right along, we'll go into the public works report for July. You have in front of you the monthly order and wastewater status report for July of 2016. One thing I would like for you folks to look at is if you look at the front page and where it talks about average gallons of water pumped per day, you can see in July we pumped 288,000 gallons per day compared to the previous month, compared to June, of 336,000 gallons a day. If you recall, part of that difference, the difference is 40, almost 48,000 gallons. Part of that difference is the water that was used to water the athletic field at Manchester Valley High School. So, just keep that in the back of your mind. If you save these reports, just go back into the reports and you'll see, you know, what an impact that had. The rehabilitation to the Holland Drive Pump Station is approximately 85 percent complete. Under wastewater, the wastewater plan inspection by MDE was carried out on July 26th, and the plan is in compliance. I would like to congratulate wastewater operator Mark Leister for passing his Class III Wastewater Operator Certification. And another action item that will be coming up is the automatic gate closure for the wastewater treatment plant. Under stormwater, we have received a grading plan for the fill area off of Water Street. The Route 27 Stormwater Management Facility on August 3rd, the town received a non-tile wetlands and water waste permit for construction from MDE. That was immediately passed on to Carroll County, so that project is moving forward. The Southwestern Boulevard Storm Drain Project, there's no change in that. Under maintenance roads and parks, the skate park project's about 60 percent complete. The lift, the vehicle lift, has been installed at the maintenance shop. Under the nature center, Keith Hindor with professional surveyors and I are working through the requirements for the Carroll County Health Department. I've also requested some information from the nature center board on locations of certain equipment. The town was notified that we'll be receiving $35,781 in POS funding. Again, the request was made for the lighting replacement on D Field. So, right now, with the funds that we have in grants, we're probably pretty close to about $140,000 to $150,000 for that project through grants. So, that's where we're at on that. I would also like for the mayor and the council to think about the wastewater and antifreeze collection site at our maintenance facility. We have a beautiful building now, a recycling site for the oil and antifreeze is a eyesore up there. We are trying to put our heads together and figure out what we can do to relocate that somewhere nearby our maintenance shop, because that has to be monitored very closely. People, we come in Monday morning and people have dropped off their full containers of oil. They empty their oil, they leave their containers. There's a lot of issues associated with that. MES, Maryland Environmental Service, actually takes care of the project. They administer the system up there. That particular site, last year, there was almost 5,000 gallons of wastewater brought in up there. So, it is used extensively. It does, it is labor intensive for our people. We're trying to figure out an area where we can have the wastewater site and also have a site for the dumpster that is used by the rec council and the town, which is now sitting on lines called property. So, we're trying to figure that out. So, our staff is open to suggestions on where we can put this. It is used. We are going to try to spruce it up a little bit until we make a decision on what we're going to do, but I just, I just want to throw that out there. And if you, I've talked to MES. MES basically says, "Look, if you don't want it anymore, you know, we can take it away." But it does serve the community and the surrounding community. A lot of people use it. So, just keep that in the back of your mind. My last item, I'd like to extend our condolences to our park supervisor, Dave Brown. Unfortunately, Dave's mother passed away on July 27th. Please keep Dave and his family in your prayers. I appreciate that. Any questions for me?
Steve, going back to pending items, number four, the sidewalk issues. The letters went out on July 21st. Have we had any response from anyone?
(inaudible).
We've had one property or contacted me. There's only been, out of the letters that went out, only two of them have actually picked up their certified letters. They were all sent certified. Of the two, one contacted me, and they will be working on it. And that particular home was an apron through the sidewalks, so it really didn't even have a sidewalk, but she is going to care of that.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else, Steve? Okay. Chief Hess?
Good evening, everybody. For the month of July, the Manchester Police Department handled 61 calls for service in town. We did have one Part 1 crime that involved a lawsuit from Auto. We criminally charged only three people this month, which is a good thing. Two were for traffic-related DUI, one was for assault. We conducted 57 traffic enforcement stops. The primary locations were Westminster Street, Keating Court, and Crossroad Overlook, and Main Street along Route 30. We did have, for year-to-date, we have nine Part 1 crimes in comparison to an all-time low last year, where we had 11 for the same period. In 2016, year-to-date, county has reported 218 overdoses in comparison to 121 last year. 97 heroin-related overdoses in comparison to 38 last year, and 20 fatalities in comparison to 17 fatalities this year. For the month of July, it was extremely high. There was 41 cases of overdose, 18 were heroin-related with three fatalities. Hampstead had four. Thankfully, Manchester had zero, Sykesville had one, Tawnytown had one, and Westminster had 12. Year-to-date, Westminster is actually leading the pack with 47, and then Tawnytown has 45. We have five for year-to-date. The battle's daunting. We're trying to stay on top of it. There's a lot that goes into it, from education to prevention to healthcare, to trying to get people to pay attention to how much pain medication they take, because that is a gateway. And whether the government wants to admit it or not, I'll say it, marijuana's a gateway. And then when you open the doors for marijuana, it allows these kids to think that it's legal to continue to smoke marijuana, and it's a contributing factor to everything that's going on. But the county is working together. We work very closely. We work close with the health department, and we're trying to stay on top of it the best we can, but it continues to get in front of us. Again, to echo the words of Councilman Wilder, National Night Out was a huge success. Mama played a contributing factor. The churches played a contributing factor. Everybody came together. I think the little library gave 230 books away. Is that what it was, 230? So, that's a huge success, and it was just one big family event, and it showed how close our community is. And on the heels of that, I got to thank the community. I got to thank Manchester. We rank number three in the state for the safest city in town. Sykesville took number two, and Brentwood, I believe it is, outside of DC, Rockville took number one. So, we are number three, though. So, that's a good, that's a good thing for us. And that's about it.
Very good. At least we ended on a positive note here. Okay, next item, discussion of the FY '16 general fund budget revision for new town hall police station costs. I won't do this justice as Kelly would have, but there's a need for us to revise the FY ' '16 general fund budget by increasing the revenue by $700,000, which will be done through a withdrawal of our money market savings, and increase expenditures by an equal amount, $700,000 for the town hall police department. Those were a lot of words that don't make a whole lot of sense, but no extra money's being spent. This is what we refer to as a housekeeping item, where we're just kind of making a shift for budgetary reasons, but again, no additional money's being allocated or spent. It's just a switch in budget items. Is it clear enough?
That is correct. We're switching from fiscal year '16 to fiscal year '17.
Right. So, on the agenda, we've listed as a discussion item, but we can go forward with making a motion to approve that here this evening.
I'll make a motion that we approve the general fund budget revision for the new two, new town hall police station.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, very good. Next, discussion for a bid for ADA Sidewalk Project. Steve?
Correct. We received a community legacy grant of the amount of $60,000. Actually, Jared Schumacher, who we've worked with in the past, chaired up this project. And we contracted an engineer, Arrow Engineering, and we put bids out. Our original scope of work was to go from the square all the way up to Grand Street for the sidewalk, ADA, entrance, sidewalk, and so on. And that was the base bid. You can see where the base bids come back. Congressional Construction came in at $116,000, AJ Romano came in at $180,000. So, of course, we were out of scope, out of that scope of work. We also asked for an ultimate bid, and this tracked the project down. So, the project's going to be going from the square to Church Street, and you can see Congressional Construction came back with a bid of $68,035, and AJ Romano came back with a bid of $48,350, well under $60,000. So, it is our recommendation to go with AJ Romano Construction for the ultimate bid of $48,250. To give you some background, I've worked with both of those companies. I actually have not worked directly with Romano, but Romano was a company that actually did and did the second round of sidewalk for Main Street, and they worked for S.H.A. They're a recognized firm. They did a very good job, the second go-round, and we were very pleased with their work. So, that's the recommendation to go with AJ Romano.
Good. Any questions for Steve?
I will make a motion in regard to ADA Sidewalk Improvement Bids, that we accept the bid by AJ Romano Construction Company, the amount of $48,350.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. AJ Romano Construction for $48,350. Next, discussion of bid for swing gate entry, the wastewater treatment plant.
Correct. That was put into the budget, which was approved, a budget of figure of $8,000. This is for an automatic entry system, entry swing gate at the wastewater treatment plant. We've had a situation where we want to toughen up and tighten up our security at the wastewater treatment plant, and for some reason, people's GPSes are sending them into the wastewater treatment plant. They come through the gates, they get down there, they can't return around, they have some issues. This would basically become an automatic gate that the operators would press in a code as they leave, and then replace them, and tighten up the security. We received two bids back. One was from Whalens for $7,418, which included the whole package, the gates, the openers, the electric, everything. It would be a turnkey system. The other bid came in from CCC Fence for $4,400, which, as was written there, did not include the electrical work stretching taskwork or backstop. It's staff recommendation to go with Whalens for $7,418, which was, of course, under $80,000.
Steve, just out of curiosity, did anybody talk to CCC Fence in regard to their bid and why it was submitted that way?
It basically said, "We do not do electric, and we don't want to get involved."
Got it.
I'll make a motion that we go forward with the bid from Whalens for the wastewater treatment plant for $7,418.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Whalens. Okay, next on the agenda is a presentation by Dawn Horst from South Sixth Bulta regarding a youth cafe. This one? Can please come up to my table?
Yeah, just, yeah, just speak to us, I'll hear you. Okay. I submitted a proposal a while, a little while ago. Basically, what we are trying to do is open a teen-type cafe with sandwiches, snacks, coffee, soft drinks, that kind of thing, for ages 12 to 18. The reason we want to do a cafe theme is we want to get them in the door to encourage them to join the youth center, which is attached to the cafe. The cafe would generate the funds needed to help us reduce the burden for fundraising in the center itself. We want to encourage the teens in the area to get involved with the community, try to show them it's not all manual labor, community service is not all about, you know, digging trenches and pulling weeds. We want to give them a place to go where they're not shooed away. We've had some problems with the senior center and community center that's down there. We tried to get some events down there for fundraising, tried to get some youth programs encouraged there. We were turned away. We've had some trouble with some of the about 16- to 17-year-olds hanging out in that parking lot, getting shooed away. We've just had some issues with some teens congregating in areas they don't need to be. I volunteer for the local Boy Scouts at Kirkridge, and a lot of the boys are interested in community service and things like that, and a lot of their friends that aren't in Scouts have difficulty finding a way to figure out where the community service type things are. We want to encourage kids to get involved with kids they wouldn't normally hang out with. I have a couple locations in mind, and this one is one of them. We're interested in using this building. It's centralized, it's a good, large space. It's close to the fire department, the police department. It has parking, which is a huge problem for us. The other locations we've looked at have a lot of parking issues. We're encouraging, obviously, drop-off. We want the kids to feel like they can be themselves and hang out and do that kind of thing, and the other locations we've looked at are along Main Street. The drop-off is not ideal, the space is not large enough, things like that. Of course, too, cost is also an issue. We've looked at, we looked at the old Jabba Volt. That is, that's already rented out, but for example, that was almost $4,000 a month by the time you added in the condo fees. I mean, you just, we just can't, as a nonprofit, afford $4,000 a month when we're trying to basically serve the community. So, we've preliminarily named it the Chester for Manchester, the Chester Cafe. We've gotten, we've gotten about 1,100 of the local students interested in it, about 150 who have agreed to become a member of it. We have access to almost 8,000 in this area between the ages of 12 and 18. We have over 100 signatures from parents who are interested in their kids joining, and as far as Facebook goes, we're over 100 likes on Facebook from local kids in the area who want to hang out there and want to be involved. So, we're looking to provide a safe, fun environment for them to not only interact with each other, but interact with the community. So, that's what I'm here to talk about.
The information presented this evening, that was all included in the information that you have already sent us?
It was.
There's nothing new that we need to?
No, it's all in there. As I submitted a preliminary budget, is what we're looking at. We're trying to get a non-membership fee, but we understand when we first start out, we're probably going to have to charge a small membership fee. The membership fee would include, you know, any activity that the cafe provides would include that, and then we're offering, you know, inclusive kind of snacks and drinks, and then all are welcome at the cafe. You can walk in anytime and get a soda and a snack. You don't have to be a member. So, that's in the budget. We've raised a little over $15,000 so far. We have applied for our 501(c)(3). It's still pending. It would be retroactive when it does come through. So, we are able to operate at this point. We're just waiting for the paperwork to come through. So, all of that was included. In addition to, I believe we listed all of the locations that we looked at, but we are down to this one and one other at this point.
Okay. I think it's a great idea. Unfortunately, plans are already underway to convert this building into a historical center. We've actually received a very large grant for us to do that.
Right.
So, that would be a major change in plans that are already underway. But, and I think Steve may have mentioned it to you last week.
Right, and the historical center would be open every day and would be something that everyone in the community is involved with. I mean, we're talking about a large beneficial to the community. We're talking about something that was going to benefit a lot of people, and right now, my understanding is that the historical kind of museum that we're talking about is going to be opened on a limited basis. I mean, we're willing to work with you on that. We're willing to staff it for you. I mean, we're talking about something that's really going to impact people.
I don't know what the plans are exactly, how the plans to be operated, but it's just something for us to think about. Okay, but unfortunately, the mayor and other council members are here, and we've got to take some time to look at the information and present it.
Okay.
But it'll be difficult to change plans right now with where we're going with the building.
Okay, so are there any other obstacles as far as you see? Are you willing to offer any other suggestions or assistance, do you think?
Um, I'm not at this point. I'm going to have to really give some more thought, maybe deepen the plan, but...
Okay. You know, we would have to have discussions, you know, within the council and the mayor and that type of thing, and review it and go through all the options and, you know, that type of thing.
Okay.
We can't, we definitely cannot make any decisions without everybody...
Well, I know, I'm not asking for a decision. I'm asking for feedback, that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just looking for feedback. So, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Laurie, has anybody else signed up from the community to speak? Okay, Jerry, I'm sorry, can't pronounce the last name. Okay. I'm going to keep... Okay, can you keep coming back through?
Okay, I've been thinking about this, I've been losing a lot of sleep over some issues, and I'm a, a member of Castlefield, live up there, and since the mayor ain't here, wish I wa, wish he, I wish he was, my statement starts out, Mr. Mayor, Town Councilwoman Women, Steve Miller, Chief Hess and others, my name is Jerry Bowen. My wife Louie and I moved to Castlefield, a fifty-five-plus community on December of two thousand fourteen. The following issues or statements that I'm about to bring to the town council reflect my own opinion and not those of the residents of Castlefield, even though some of them may share the same feelings. The first issue is the one of town taxes that my wife and I pay on our property at twenty-seven forty-three Vista's Drive. I would like to know what our eight hundred dollars of town taxes that we pay every year, and which can be certain that amount will increase as our assessments go up in the future, why we do not benefit or receive any of the town services now to provide it to other town residents? The answer that I've heard in the past from town workers is that they are within their legal rights, per the town attorney, to be doing as they are as far as not providing Castlefield with certain services. If that is so, is there legal documents stating that, and if so, would it be available to everyone to see to verify that the developer and the town made such an agreement? For example, how much would it cost the town to provide Castlefield with trash pickup? As of now, Castlefield contracts the same vendor to haul our trash away. The cost to Castlefield for, for such services is ten thousand five hundred dollars a year, which will probably rise in the future also. If we were to take the amount the Castlefield community pays in town taxes for a year, we are looking at approximately thirty-six thousand four hundred dollars based on seven hundred dollars per unit times fifty-two units when projected is completed. We have forty-nine's completed now, I used a seven hundred dollar figure as an average because subunits assessments are lower or higher than mine. If that costs a ten thousand five hundred is taken off our total, the town would still be receiving approximately twenty-six thousand dollars. Is it possible for the town to help the Castlefield community out on the trash hauling issue? I guess my main concern is that we, Castlefield, not being treated the same as other town residents when it comes to services that can be divided by the town to us. We as members of the community patronize local shop owners, gas stations, doctors, banks, and support local fire department and more. I feel that we have very little impact and make few, if any, demands on the town, and feel that it would make a good relation, relationship between us and the town if you, the town council would step up and do what is morally right, whether it be legally right or not, to help out a res, help out the residents of Castlefield. It seems to me that sometimes when people see a fifty-five in every community come to place, that people get the opinion new residents are wealthy and can afford whatever comes their way. The truth of the matter is, most of us had to sell a house, and some of us had to borrow money to purchase here. All of us have worked many years and saved many years to finally retire and enjoy our latter years. Most of us are on fixed incomes and are using our savings to live on. That is why I'm asking the town council to help Castlefield on this issue. If that is not possible, what avenue can we take and have this council see what is happening to us is not fair to us? If you read the definition of the word tax in the dictionary, it says that a tax is a sum of money levied on income, property, sales, et cetera, by government for its support or for specific services which we are getting neither. I have another issue, you're just going to listen to what I have to say, you're not going to comment, I assume, correct? Okay. The other issue that I wish to bring into your attention is the one I hope someone can explain to me that is one how we are being charged for water hookup and fire hydrants or calculators. If we have one meter top of our community with one eight-inch hookup to the town's water system, why are we being charged each unit that is hooked up to our own privately-owned system? It is my understanding that we have a combination meter per se at the beginning of the community. This meter reads daily usage on a low-flow indicator and a meter that will read a higher intake if and when the fire hydrants are put into action. Is that meter a one-time hookup for our eight-inch line that feeds both our daily intake and fire protection system? Does the town own that meter, or is it Castlefield's? Does the town maintain or repair the meter at their expense, or will there be a billing charge to Castlefield if and when some repairs or repaint, or replacement is necessary? Since all fifty-two units and three fire hydrants beyond said meter, why are we being charged a per-unit price per quarter for the units and an annual charge for the, for the fire hydrants? The town is billing Castlefield as one owner, reading one meter and sending out one bill. This alone saves the town a lot of labor hours and administration dollars. Why aren't we covered by the four hundred and eighty-dollar charge for the eight-inch hookup on the annual basis, no matter what is behind the meter? If Castlefield is a private community, like you say, everything beyond the meter is privately-owned, we're being billed three hundred, three thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars a year for fifty-two units to be hooked up to the water, plus four thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars a year for fifty-two units for sewage, along with forty-eight dollars a year for the eight-inch water hookup, plus eighteen hundred dollars a year for the three hydrants on the property. It means that Castlefield is paying the town ten thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars a year for unit hookups and fire protection even before we use a drop of water. My main question to the town is, are we one private resident, are we fifty-two units, or we are not counted at all since we're not getting anything for our town taxes when other town residents are? Or is it based on the amount of revenue that can be received by the town? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Well, this... To Ben, what I would offer is, there were a lot of questions and measurements and metrics and calculations and that I could never, that I could never possibly, so I, I suppose you intend to submit that to, send that to us officially, send it to us.
I'll drop the copy.
And please understand, we're not treating Castlefield just independently different than everybody else. There are other areas, I think, around town that are treated the same way, and it's all in accordance with our town code, so, but please, send it to us and we'll take a look because there's a lot of information in there. But thank you for your time.
I guess what, can I add a comment?
Sure.
Does everybody on the town council realize that we're not getting anything for our town taxes? I mean, is everybody aware of that? That's all the council now.
I have now, since Doc has brought it to my attention in the past.
Yeah, he brought it to our attention previously.
But before no one knew this?
Well, that, that all came about before I ever got on the council.
Right.
And there's a lot that has gone into that decision based on what I've heard in the past as far as the builder and the town and zoning. So it is a complex issue, and don't think we're taking it lightly. We have looked at it, it has gone through our legal review team, so we are, we are here where we are, but I, I promise you, we'll revisit it.
Thank you. Well, we can...
Come on, Doc.
You have something, I know you have something to add, I saw you...
Oh, yeah, 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 actually, Doc fits in pretty good, but I'm not sucking. I'm going to be a little more brief, not because I write less, but my leg gets numb when I stand too long, so. Okay, I'm here, actually, I came here to refocus on Castlefield's concerns, all right? Basically, it's the issues of inequity and tax unfairness, and of course, they're both linked. First, I want to comment on the attorney's letter advice, because you put so much weight on it. He mentioned that, let's see, I mentioned earlier that, even before reading it, I knew it would, what it would contain because I can read ordinances in code. Your attorney just advised you essentially that you can do what you, which, because the code permits it and other governments do it. He stated what is, he reiterated to status quo and said basically, don't worry, it's legal. Well, there's no surprise there, it is. He added, it had nothing to do with the senior community. Well, for one, it actually does have something to do with the senior community because we are a specific component of the exclusions. The code did not have to state including senior communities, we were excluded through the language's generalization. Of course, we are not challenging the legality of the code, just the surface it inflicts. Okay, here's the evil verse. Here's the code. Properties with more than two equivalent dwelling units, as that term is defined in the code, a town of Manchester are not considered normal household waste and therefore require one dumpster to be paid for by the property owner. You know, it's just a journalist exclusion and how the exception was made for that. I don't know who came up with it or why, but, anyway, but I'm not here to differ on what, on the way it is, right? And that's not why we are here. We're here the way it should be, but we're here about the way it can be. We're here for you to recognize what we contributed and what we do contribute. We're here to ask for your partnership, and more specifically, we're here to ask for your leadership. My municipal tax bill this year is eight hundred and one dollars and fifty-eight cents. Among other things, my eight hundred and one dollars, fifty-eight cents pays for trash, pay, for the trash service for everyone in Manchester, helps subsidize that, okay, for everyone in Manchester. And said, why? Because collectively, arbitrarily, the, the government, you, or as government, promulgated an exclusion clause that applies to me without tax preparation. There's no exception, there's no allowance made, you know, in taxes for our exclusion, there are exceptions. So at our, where we are, we, we share a greater burden than the other citizens in, in the community, okay? Right? Well, I say aye, but we want you to take some form of action to move this forward. We want it rectified, we want you to be concerned leaders and, and do something. Form a committee, form a task force, get staff to evaluate and make recommendations, look at it in detail, but move, take some action to move forward. And doing nothing is not acceptable for us. If you can create an exclusion for condominiums in general, you can also create an exception for, within this code, for senior community, okay? That's all.
Were you two planning to submit that?
I'll have your copies.
We're going to write on the written letter and send it. Just because we have all the information, there's a lot of information...
Yes. I can get these to you.
Okay, Ms. Wurst, did you put your name down because you wanted to speak about something else, or did you think you needed to, for your...
Yeah, I just put it down.
Okay. Okay, finally, Betty Smith?
Okay, excuse me, I'm Betty Smith, live right here in town, and I'm part of the Manchester Historical Committee, along with two other people there in the back. I just wanted to speak so, to make people aware of what we've been doing. We started, we received a grant in two thousand fourteen, and we've been having monthly meetings ever since then. We can't do anything upstairs until the move is made, and then we can start looking at changes that need to be made to accommodate all of those things that are downstairs. The downstairs cannot be used for the public because of the ADA accessibility, so we haven't been stagnant, though, we've been doing a lot of different things. We were appointed early in the spring of two thousand fourteen, we've put in a number of hours as volunteers, we've done the monthly meetings, we've actually had a private tour because we had a group of people that was able to handle the stairs, so we've done private tour, we've been greeting guests on Sundays, we've attended related workshops, we're working on an inventory to actually establish what all is down there, and we've visited similar museums in the county. We're modifying forms for donations and loans, the inventory is really taking a lot of time, and all of those things are multiple, multiplied by three to five people each time that we're here. So we have quite a few hours that we've put in, in the past two years. So I just wanted to make everybody aware that things are happening, but not in a timely manner that, that we had hoped, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to address the council before we move on? Thank you all for coming, I do appreciate your interest in what's going on in town. Okay, committee reports. Councilwoman Smith?
Yes, went to the cable commission, the meeting last month, not a whole lot of changes, still finalizing some of the paperwork for the franchise, that type of thing. Marion Ware did retire, so she, her last day was, I don't remember her exact last day, but she, Stephanie will be taking over and I'm sure she'll do a great job, so that's all we have for as far as that goes. I have Jen Warner, Councilwoman Warner's information as well, she asked me to pass along because she couldn't be here tonight, she apologizes, but she's out of town. She also echoed the last week, we hosted National Night Out, which was a huge success, we had a great turnout and overwhelming amount of support from the community. Also, I forgot to mention, and I think we forgot to mention, the Garry's were hu, had a huge input with National Night Out, with their snowballs, everybody loved them, so thank you for that. Let's see, I'd also, she'd also said she'd like to thank the town employees, they gave up their evenings to volunteer their time and come out and help us. Also, she's currently in the process of reaching out to the four schools in our community to work on collaborating with them in order to display student artwork. She'd like to be able to feature artwork each quarter of the school, one quarter for each school to have on display at the new town hall for our residents to enjoy, and again, she apologized for being absent, but she will see everyone next month.
MAMA and Sustainability Task Force, Councilwoman Chelley?
The next MAMA meeting is August eighteenth at twelve o'clock at Spargos. They featured Merchant this month for MAMA, is F and M Mailing Services located at thirty-one Wareheim, that's run by Nick Capador and his family. So check out their website, try to use local businesses as we did. Steve, I have no update on sustainability, do you?
Jerry and Jim and I were together a few weeks ago, and we wanted to have a summer night, vacation. That's probably, probably, you know, it's up there and we'll get something.
Okay, Parks and Recreation, Councilwoman Hale?
I attended a meeting last night, and these are the activities for this month. On August the eleventh and the twelfth, we're supposed to have a meteor shower, which is supposed to be incredible this year for some reason, and the best time to see it is after midnight, so the telescope will be out and people will be there at the nature center if anyone's interested. Again, that's August the eleventh and twelfth. August the twentieth is another bocce tournament, and I understand that some people from Castlefield went to check it out. So if you're interested, there are still some openings for some teams, that's August the twentieth, and the photo contest is still ongoing. Again, you can get your applications in the library or here in the town office or at Charlotte's Quest, and that's it.
Thank you. All right, Planning and Zoning is me. The commission did not meet in July, unfortunately, there was too many, too much unavailability of the commission members, so we will be having our meeting again next week, our regular scheduled meeting for August, and then the week after that, we meet for another planning session to continue discussions. And that's it. Me, Chief Representative, Andrew, anything?
I said earlier, twenty-ninth is the first day of school, and thirty-first is the stampede, that is all I have.
Okay. That's it for agenda items, is there anything else anybody would like to bring up, discuss before we adjourn?
On August twenty-seventh, the Boy Scout Group Twenty-Six Seventy-One is having a family event at Kirkridge Church, it's a car show and flea market. We'll have food and snowballs and probably some games, baseballing, that kind of thing.
What time, what are the times?
It's from ten to four.
August the what? Twenty?
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh?
It's a Saturday.
From ten to four at Kirkridge?
At Kirkridge.
Okay.
And I think we still have some spots to enter in, cars, we're taking cars, trucks, motorcycles. We still have some spots if you'd like to sell something at the flea market, and I think I have one or two vendor spots available if you want to sell something specific, you know, like, I think we have, we have a showcase in Bud Light, we have a Jeff or something like that. And it should be a really fun event, it's our fourth one, it's our fourth annual, as we put it, and it's a really good after event, and the scouts, scouts always make it fun, so, it'll be good.
We, the town is looking to put together a calendar for the whole year with events from Lions Club, Fire Department, the town, the nature center, the school, and we could include the Boy Scouts in that also.
That would be great.
So that, you know, it's, so that everybody knows what's going on, but we're, we're working on that to try to get it done, hopefully by the first of the year and mail it out, so...
That would be great.
I didn't even think about that, I apologize, but we'll contact you for your activities also to put on the calendar.
Yeah, that would be great. I mean, we do, we do a public big ones a year, and then we do some, you know, it's really generous and things like that.
Yeah, but it's good to get this out to everybody, and everybody will know what's, what's going on at school, everything. Yeah, but it's good to get this out to everybody, and everybody will know what's, what's going on at school, e- everything, so...
Right.
All right, I will keep that on the...
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you for that.
One more.
Let me think about it. The Tree of Friends, uh, pantry on Main Street is changing our hours from Saturday, two to four, to Sundays, two to four, starting September first. Um, we're also in pretty desperate need of some donations. We need, um, the canned proteins, tuna, salmon, chicken, peanut butter, soup, pasta sauce, things like that. We're really running low, and we are having a little bit of a hard time serving the families that are coming in. If anyone wants to donate, drop by, two to four, Saturday. Something off. Thank you.
And it'll be on Sunday starting September, but now it's on Saturdays, two to four.
Yeah, mhm.
Okay.
It's right there, on Main Street, it's right across from here.
It's right next to the firehouse.
Right there. Yeah. And we're looking at some options of putting a drop box up at the back door, so it's easier for people to drop. We're sort of trying to toy with how that's going to work out, but for now... It's a food pantry. Yep. And we've been busy, so the need is there, so any donation would be great.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's fine.
No.
It's okay.
The more the better. Okay, that's it, motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. I second the motion.
And the motion's second, all those in favor signify by, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
He's adjourned. Thank you, everybody, good night.